Thanks for coming, folks. We're going to get started pretty quick here. Could I ask folks in the back to maybe come on in and shut that door and we can get started? Thanks for turning out. My name's Dan Funch and I work with the Alliance for the Wild Rockies. And we decided to have a meeting tonight to try and let folks have an opportunity to talk about and discuss our proposed Northern Rockies Ecosystem Protection Act. It's a proposal that you've heard a lot about. Tonight, we're going to be exploring some of the biological, economic, and social considerations of that proposal. And we want to make it kind of a working session, too. Let me just give you a brief rundown of how we've structured tonight. After I'm finished here in a sec, I'm going to introduce Mike Bader, who's the Director of the Alliance for the Wild Rockies, to give us a quick, and I do mean quick, 10-minute rundown of the proposal itself. He's got a couple of slides and he's going to explain what the bill does. After that, we're going to come back and we've got four panelists and we'll introduce those folks later. But they're going to also give a brief overview from their different perspectives of the legislation. But thanks again for turning out and I'd like to ask Mike Bader, the Director of the Alliance, to come up and give us a quick overview of the NARIPA bill.
As Dan mentioned, we've got this proposal, the Northern Rockies Ecosystem Protection Act. This is the part of the country it deals with. We have some gray brochures back there that have kind of a smaller version of this map, but for discussion purposes, here we've got Montana, Idaho, a little bit of northeast Oregon and Washington, and then northwest Wyoming around the Yellowstone country. The blue is the park Yellowstone. There's Glacier. Here's central Idaho. Missoula is right about in here. So we got a reference. The bill was introduced in Congress after about three years of work at just earlier this fall. It was given the number HR 5944. Real quickly, what the bill does is it seeks to protect the ecosystems in the Northern Rockies and vital connections or linkage zones between those ecosystems to protect the biodiversity. I'm just going to give a quick blast through some slides here just to discuss some of the general philosophy behind it. There's people speaking after me tonight that have far more expertise in some of these areas, so I'm just going to keep it pretty general. But before I do that, I'll just give you a rough overview of the bill. It's got 18 different sections to it, so it's fairly complex. But the major portions of it is it contains wilderness designation, which are the dark green areas that are in these core areas mainly and within the corridors. It would protect about 1,300 miles of wild and scenic rivers and put a couple hundred more miles under study status. It has two national park and preserve study areas, one in the Hell's Canyon region along the Snake River and the Idaho-Oregon border, another up in the north fork of the Flathead, where these would be studied to determine if they were suitable for park and preserve status where hunting, fishing, even some motorized use would continue in those areas. It's got a unique section on biological corridors or linkage zones linking these areas, protecting the core roadless component as wilderness, and then a special management provision. See a lot of people coming in who don't have seats. If you don't have seats, there are a few extra chairs and here there's some extra seats up here, so just walk right by. Don't bother me because I won't be bothered. Another component of the bill is really important. It's a pilot system of wildland recovery areas. They're in the red. These are areas that have really been damaged severely by extractive use practices and those areas will be dedicated to restoration, putting people to work repairing the ecosystem. These are critical areas. There's some other details in here, but those are the major points. This is, again, the part of the area we're looking at. We're concerned also with areas up in Canada because wildlife, rivers, birds don't stop at these arbitrary boundaries and our thinking shouldn't either. Some of the most beautiful and rugged country in the whole United States. It's one of the reasons it's still fairly wild. This is the east front of the Rockies over in the Rocky Mountain front. Last place where grizzlies still come out onto the Great Plains and the whole lower 48. Big areas, this is up in north of Yellowstone Park. This is one of the corridor areas along the Bitterroot Divide, looking up towards the Bitterroots from Salmon, Idaho. Big trees, we've still got a few left. This one's not there anymore, but it was. That was in the Hell's Canyon NRA. And of course wildlife, probably more native wildlife species here than anywhere else in the lower 48. In fact, virtually every species that was here when the Lewis and Clark expedition came through nearly 200 years ago still live here in the Northern Rockies, although at far reduced numbers and ranges. But they're still here, which is critical. Most of the country has a very incomplete fauna. We even have some of the wide-ranging predators like the wolf and the grizzly bear, which is really unique. To have the top of the food chain still here is important. If they go, remember, we're at the top. That's not a good place to be. Big guys still, a few of them. Just a wide array of wildlife treasures that we just don't have anywhere else. I think it's really important to people that we keep those and certainly a big part of the Alliance's mission. The reason they're here is we have some relatively intact blocks of wildlands. It's sort of the philosophy behind the proposal. Here we've got the Glacier Park Bob Marshall area going up a little bit into Bruges, Columbia, and Alberta. The central Idaho complex, it may be the largest remaining temperate forest ecosystem even in the world. A lot of country there. Of course, the Yellowstone ecosystem. So you can sort of see a triangle there, big blocks. There's some other blocks that are real important like the Hell's Canyon. Then the cabinet area, the Selkirk's up in the panhandle of Idaho and northeast Washington are also critical. Of course, we seek to link those. This is the major problem, is fragmentation of habitat, clearcutting, road building, things like that. We're looking up towards the Mission Mountains Wilderness and you can see there's just a little thin band of trees between the rocky mountain tops and then the clearcuts. The valley's gone. It's not even there anymore. Road building's a major agent of fragmentation. It's a real serious problem because of the amount of roads that we've got, just tens and tens of thousands of miles. It's hard to believe and you pay for them. Remember that. You pay $50,000 to $100,000 per mile for every one of those roads. This is on the Flathead Forest between Swan Lake and Flathead Lake. There, that isn't even habitat fragmentation, that's elimination. If you're an elk or a bear, you're in big trouble in a place like that because there's nowhere to hide. Again, these are all shots mainly close to Missoula. Very large clearcuts. I mean unbelievable. People from Brazil don't even see things like this. And it's moving up higher and higher into more fragile territory and steeper territory. This is the reason we're losing some of our fish populations are the sediments, the soil literally washing right off the mountainsides because there's nothing left to hold it in place. And this goes on and on and you can see some of the erosion occurring there. We don't have clear days in the fall because they burn slash. Oil and gas is a problem, mining. There are other things going out on the landscape. We don't want to pin it all on logging. There's a number of things. But one of the things that we're trying to protect are some of the original forests, the native biodiversity. Our forests here are adapted to a lot of different influences, including wildfire. And it's important that those disturbances that are natural be continued to occur. We're really worried about headwaters. We're the headwaters for three different oceans here. That makes us pretty significant. Clean water for a lot of uses, not just wildlife and recreation, but agriculture, a lot of things it's important for. So we've got a big responsibility there. We've got a lot of other natural treasures in the region that are susceptible to tinkering. This is something I wanted to show the next couple of slides because this is something where we want to change the focus. In the past, a lot of our wilderness or protected systems have consisted of territory like this. It's really scenic and important, but it's high elevation. It's not prime wildlife habitat and we need to move a little lower down. This is another designated wilderness, same type of thing. We need to get into some of the lower country like this where we have waterfowl populations, major migration routes for wildlife, and of course, some of the great winter ranges that we have here that nobody else has anymore, where we have African-scale wildlife herds. And big trees. We don't have a lot, but we still have some down in the lower riparian areas and they're real important for a lot of species that can't live in small trees. So that's really it in a nutshell. We just want to keep the native wildlife here. I think it's real important to us. It's an indicator of the quality of life for our bio-region and that has implications for us. If the primary indicators are going down, it's a red flag warning that our quality of life for us is declining. So we're kind of taking a community-wide approach to this. Again, getting down into some of the lower, more prime habitats that really are responsible for the remaining wildlife. And we fit in, too. There's places for us to plug in and enjoy this type of country. So that's our challenge, to make sure all the parts stay here into the future. So that's it for me and the overview and Dan will get back up there and introduce our panelists and we'll keep clipping right along. Thank you.
We want to spend about five minutes with each of these folks and they're going to get into a little bit more detail and speak about NARIPA from their different perspectives. So we're going to start out with some of the scientific information and Dr. Lee Metzger has been with the University of Montana Wildlife Biology and Zoology Programs for a number of years, spent a good part of his life taking a close look at the needs of wildlife, and he's going to tell us about that and what NARIPA does to address those needs. Next, we're going to delve into some economic issues with Dr. Tom Power. Dr. Power is the Chair of the Economics Department at the University of Montana and has just completed a region-wide study of the economic effects of the NARIPA proposal. So we'll hear something about that. After those gentlemen speak, we're going to ask Linda Smith to talk to us more about the social and small business perspective and community perspective. Linda runs a small business mountain-moving press and has been working with different community constituencies throughout the years and is going to talk to us about her perspective. And finally, we're going to have Brian Ishwan talk to us about some of the national outreach, the regional outreach that we've done, try and tie these concepts together and make sense of the program that we've had, doing outreach to different communities and trying to draw in, draw together the different concerns. So with that, I will issue a stern warning. I will be in the back of the room waving my hands when you reach your five-minute point. But no, it won't be that bad, but we do want to wrap this part of the meeting up. We want to give you guys about a half hour, so five minutes, seven minutes is all we can afford to take. We're really pressed for time, but let's jump right into it and we'll have time for questions after this.
Let's roll. I had some slides, but I'm not going to use them because...
No, you couldn't, really.
No, I'm not going to use them. I'm going to do this in seven minutes and besides, I hadn't realized how many of my slides that I use when I talk about this are the same ones that Mike uses when he talks about. So you've seen my slides already and that makes it a whole lot easier. Basically, what I'd like to do is to just highlight some of what I see as the key wildlife-related issues. And I want to talk primarily about the Northern Rockies, what's called the charismatic megafaun. I want to do that for a number of reasons. Partly, it's what I think most about, maybe know a little bit more about than some of the other things. But also, as Mike pointed out, that's the one truly unique resource in this area. This is the only place in the lower 48 states that still has the intact fauna. They're much reduced, both in ranges and in numbers, but we have the only place in the lower 48 states where every large mammal that was present when Columbus came to the New World is still present. And Mike talked about some of those. And we know why those things are here. It's because, it's not because the management agencies were astute and farsighted, it's they're here because it's cold and it's remote and it's a low-productivity ecosystem. That's why that stuff is here. And so that's important to realize because it's not as if there's a rational plan in place that's going to somehow preserve this resource. That's not the case. And I will argue in the five minutes remaining to me that we occupy a unique time. We're right on the cusp of when that fauna can exist here and when it will almost certainly disappear unless strong action is taken in the very near future. Well, basically, what's needed, I want to talk about bears because grizzly bears are the things that I think most about and I've been involved in some of those efforts. So when I look at this landscape and say, okay, is there possible, can we envision a strategy to preserve these animals? I tend to cast the argument in terms of grizzly bears just because I've thought more about that than anything else. So the issue is, is there a place here or for that matter, anyplace else in the lower 48 states where we can still support this fauna? Well, if there is, it is only here. In the case of grizzly bears, what will it take? Well, I think the scientific argument is really pretty clear, that the rule of thumb that really is most applicable here is that if we want a population to persist into perpetuity, then we need something on the order of 500 breeding animals in the population. And in grizzly bears, a bunch of them are pre-reproductive, both males and females. And some of the adult males don't breed because the dominant guys beat up on them and some of the adult females don't breed because they keep their litters with them and so they breed every two or three years. So clearly, the breeding population is something considerably less than the total population. It turns out that it's pretty clear that the breeding population of grizzly bears is about a quarter of the total population size. So if we want to have a population that meets this rule of thumb for persistence to perpetuity, then we need a breeding population of 500, which translates into about 2,000 animals. So now we have to ask, okay, if we have to plan, and that's, let me emphasize that that's not conservative. I mean, there isn't any, you know, twisting the numbers around to make that bigger so we can get a little more than we think. We don't know that that will work, but applying the standard rules of thumb, that seems like a minimum number of grizzly bears to have. And we should, we should, you know, feel a little sober when we consider that there are only 1,000 or probably closer to 800 in this whole area anyway. So we don't have now a viable population of grizzly bears in the lower 48 states. That has already been lost. Okay, so if we need a landscape for 2,000 bears, what does that mean in terms of area? Well, it depends on how tightly packed the bears in here. And in most of the places bears have been studied, there are five to six bears per 100 square miles, we think, don't know, but we think that probably as the bears recover in some of these drier, less productive areas, maybe four bears per 100 square miles, well, you could do 2,000 bears, four bears per 100 square miles, you've got 50,000 square miles. That's a lot of real estate. So the issue is, what do we have now in the way of protected landscape for things like grizzly bears? And the same argument can apply to wolves and fisher and other animals links. It turns out that in these three blocks, well, there's about 16,000 square miles of green or blue and yellow stuff here. Now there are about 16,000 square miles over here, I think, about 11,000 up there. We're getting close, about one here and one here. That adds up to 45,000 square miles and that's an interesting, I mean, the two numbers just happen to be about, just about 50,000 is what we need. 45,000 square miles is what is already in protected habitat. So total through here, it looks like there's enough real estate, pretty close, to support a viable population of grizzly bears. The problem, of course, is that it's split up into three chunks. So the only way we can have a viable population of grizzly bears and probably these other animals in the lower 48 states is to have this be occupiable country, occupiable blocks connected by corridors that are at least secure enough so that occasionally animals are able to move from one block to another. And that's the key. We probably have enough geography to do what we want to do. We probably have enough geography to save this last piece of this part of our cultural and spiritual heritage. But the only way it will happen is by preserving these blocks and ensuring that there are secure enough pieces between these so that animals can occasionally move from one of these blocks to another. Now, I don't care what you call the plan. Any responsible management agency, any responsible conservation organization, any responsible citizen who generates a landscape plan within which we have any hope of preserving self-sustaining populations of these species will have a plan that looks like the Northern Rockies Ecosystem Protection Plan. And as it turns out, this is the only plan in existence at the present time that has anywhere nearly the scope to offer a landscape that has a hope of being adequate to preserve self-sustaining populations of these species. So that's the essence of the scientific argument and I think I would end there and we may have time for questions later. Thank you.
In the entire area that the Northern Rockies Ecosystem Protection Act would try to extend some sort of protection to the landscape, something approaching 20 million acres would get significant protection against extractive economic activity. Given that Montanans just went through a bruising debate over whether we should protect 1.1 or 1.3 million acres, the suggestion that 20 million acres of additional land in addition to what's protected in our parks and in existing wilderness areas should be granted protection against clearcutting, roded mineral, timber, et cetera development might seem absolutely outrageous. And of course, the commodity interests have suggested that that's exactly what it is, that that protection on the scale that Professor Metzger has suggested is necessary for the survival of the unique species that characterize the Northern Rockies. We're told that if we try to protect the amount of landscape that's necessary for those species' survival, that we in some very direct way will drive a stake through the region's economy and the grizzly bear may survive, but people won't. That's the basic economic argument against extending protection to the wildlife and to the landscape. To try and get a feeling for the, what sort of reality lay behind that sort of fear arguments, those sort of assertions that our basic livelihoods would be threatened by any landscape protection efforts on this scale. What I did over the last half year or three-quarters of a year is go through national forest by national forest focusing on the timber employment side of the issue. I wasn't studying mining. I wasn't studying roded or motorized recreation. I was focusing on what's the primary argument and that's that these lands have to remain open to roded timber development. Short version of the conclusion is that throughout the region, the Northern Rockies, when one looks at that 20 million acres, what's at stake is something right around two-tenths of 1% of total employment. One can put that in two different ways. The direct employment impact would be in terms of people in the wood products industry who would lose their jobs is about one-tenth of 1% of jobs. If you include indirect and induced employment, one slightly more than doubles that. In the region, that sort of job loss would be made up by simply three weeks of normal job growth. So that what's at stake throughout the region is whether we think we can afford to slow down the rate of expansion of the economy by three weeks so that we can allow these wildlife populations and that landscape to survive forever. I think once the question is put in those terms, the answer should be obvious. Now, one thing that bothers people is that those numbers come out so low since we're told that the Northern Rockies, that the heart and soul of the economy in the Northern Rockies is especially, for instance, in western Montana, the panhandle of Idaho or northeastern Washington. Since we're told over and over again that the heart and the soul of that economy is wood products, people are startled at how small the employment impact is. There's a very simple reason for why the employment impact is so small and you can take a look at the maps back there beside Don Vance, which try to indicate what part of the roadless areas that would be protected are currently seen by the Forest Service as suitable for timber development. Now, this is the Forest Service that's looking at the landscape and asking, is this suitable for timber development? They're likely to find almost any piece of land that could possibly, with elaborate subsidies, be managed for timber. They're likely to classify it as suitable for timber. But the vast majority of these lands, over 80% of the lands, not only in Montana but throughout the Northern Rockies, 80% of the lands that would be protected are not classified by the Forest Service as suitable for timber production. So it shouldn't be surprising that if these lands are close to timber production, since they are part of the suitable timber base now, that there would be zero timber employment impact associated with them. There are other reasons why the impact turns out to be so small. Part of it tied to the fact that the Forest Service isn't, hasn't been able to reach the targeted timber harvests that they had in mind when they drew up their plans and almost certainly never will reach those targets. Their productivity of the land, the inventory on the land, the environmental impacts associated with those planned timber harvests will block them from ever actually being realized. Finally, the one other thing I'd like to mention is that even in talking about, say in Montana, the 300 direct jobs that I calculate would be lost in the wood products industry if close to 6 million acres of additional land got protection against roadless development. Those are not net job losses. That loss of 300 jobs assumes that there are no offsetting gains in economic activity associated with protecting the landscape. What I'd point out is that during this last decade, if one separates wilderness counties from non-wilderness counties, those counties that are adjacent to wilderness areas and those that aren't, it's been the wilderness counties that have been leading what little economic expansion has been going on in the state. Employment has been stagnant or downward in those counties whose economic development has not been constrained by wilderness. And those counties where those foolish environmentalists locked up resources in wilderness, it's in those counties that the most rapid economic growth in the state has been taking place. That is not a weird and unusual event in Montana. That is true nationwide if one studies all of the counties across the United States adjacent to wilderness. The rate of economic expansion in those counties for 30 years has been two to three times the rate of economic expansion in the rest of the country. So that wilderness, whatever it does, does not constrain economic development and it's for that reason that I'm saying that one should not focus on job losses in timber or mining as net job losses. Protecting landscapes protects a region's economic base and lays the basis for ongoing economic vitality. Thanks.
As a small business owner, I have very little time to be out of. As a small business owner, I have very little time to be out of the works, but I am intrigued by the ideas that people have about how it should be managed or not managed, as the case may be. I first learned about the Northern Rockies Ecosystem Protection Act through Mountain Moving's printing their newsletter. A bioregional approach linking intact ecosystems with corridors, allowing wildlife the habitat and movement they need to thrive, made good sense to me. I like knowing that groups like the Alliance and various forest and river watch groups are around, and I support them in the ways that I can, through discounting the printing or writing letters or making phone calls. Resource extraction was what seemed obvious to people to make an economy around when they settled in Montana. The seeming abundance of resources did not set off alarm bells about the finite nature of natural resources. Perhaps people did not even think beyond their own lifetimes. It seems pointless to me to blame people who did what seemed to be the reasonable thing to do when they came to Montana. Now, our experience is different. We see that resources can be depleted, if not totally exhausted. We understand that there are different uses for the same resource. Trees seem essential to construction and to the scenic vistas that bring perhaps the kind of tourism we want to bring here, not just any. The economy is fundamentally changing. Small businesses are being started in record numbers. Small business seeks to create a sustainable, diversified economy with a new relationship to the environment. As a business owner trying to make sense of a changing economy, I feel a lot of tension in the state over different priorities and values about natural resource use among people who live here. And I question whether it is only for Montanans to decide in a statewide wilderness bill approach. I think national interest in protecting the wild Rockies resource have to be factored in. Living in Montana, I'm aware of the struggles over various wildlife management issues. I know that what used to be considered adequate habitat for particular species is no longer because ecosystems have been fragmented, that genetic diversity through connections between ecosystems is critical to healthy populations, and that animals are dependent on people to make wise management decisions that may require people not to encroach on certain areas at certain times. I care a lot about Montana developing itself slowly and carefully, learning about the mistakes other places have made who no longer have much wilderness left. It seems important to communicate current biological information in ways that the public can understand. Town meetings and other opportunities for questions and discussions seem crucial, and if we can educate and elect people who understand the importance of creating sustainable ecosystems for people as well as animals, we will have a better chance to preserve what we have now. I'd like to hear and read more about specific information on how sustainable ecosystems work when they include both the animals and people who already live there. I think that environmentalists are seen as caring more about animals and wilderness than about people, and I think that's true for me sometimes, too. But the irony is that in order to really make things better for wildlife and wilderness, you have to care about making things better for people. If people are forced to exist on a survival level, they cannot care about wildlife and wilderness, and they may destroy it. In a precarious economy like Montana's, creating jobs that protect and restore the environment are essential. I'd like to see more specific proposals about how job creation can work in communities located near national parks and forests and wilderness areas, and examples of how it's working elsewhere that could be modified for Montana. I'm really concerned about human population growth. I think it's critical that environmentalists understand that population growth is a problem for everyone to come to terms with, not just women. In developing countries, because women gather wood and raise crops, and they do impact the environment unless they are educated to understand alternative fuel technologies, to see other opportunities for themselves, and to create some sense of security for their future other than having many children. The developed world has a very serious population problem of different dimensions, since we grow up consuming so much more as individuals. Even if families have fewer children, there are more families to begin with. So how do we make it okay to go beyond biology for humans, for couples to feel good about deciding not to have their own biological offspring? There are many other ways to relate to kids. And finally, when I think about corridors connecting ecosystems, I wonder how some corridor equivalents can be created between environmental groups, so I, as an interested supporter of the environment, don't have to hear about such-and-such group fighting some other group over some turf question. There must be ways to establish working relationships, even though there's disagreement in approach or strategy. Being able to sit down together, listen and hear where another group is coming from seems very important. Meetings can be facilitated by skilled trainers so that each group's interests are brought out. More and more, I hear talk about collaborative efforts to bring groups together to establish working relationships. In running a small business, one common trap is to become so obsessed with your own survival that you don't take time to find out what other small businesses in your field are doing to troubleshoot, to work on a project together, say, co-op advertising, and figure out how to do more than survive as one small business. I think wildlands protection and restoration and other quality of life issues are closely connected to how we communicate to each other. For me, the Northern Rockies Ecosystem Protection Act is a new way of thinking. It will take some getting used to. I'm very glad that Representative Cosmeyer formally introduced it into Congress for serious consideration. Perhaps the timing is right with the large turnover in Congress and the sense of doing away with business as usual.
I'm going to talk a little bit about why NARIPA is important and what we, as individuals in this community, can do to further its progress. And I think what Tom said earlier is really important. We have just come out of a very hot battle on 1.2 million acres of wilderness. And one of the main reasons it was a very hot battle is because a lot of you people out here in the audience who made it a very hot issue. And the reason you made it a hot issue is because it was an unacceptable way of dealing with our natural resources and with our wilderness issue. It's the status quo that we've been looking at for the last 20 years in this state. And I think so long as our politicians continue to propose this type of solution to the wilderness issue, it will continue to be a hot battle. And this is why I think NARIPA is different and offers a great deal of hope for us, because NARIPA is not just a wilderness bill. It's not just a bill to set aside one little scenic area over here and another little scenic area over there. NARIPA is a vision for the future. As Tom has pointed out to you, it encompasses economic values and economic concerns of the community. And as Lee has pointed out, it's vital to protecting our wildlife species and the type of lifestyle that a lot of us live here for. So NARIPA goes way beyond just a wilderness bill. It's really a vision for the future, and it's your vision. It's not the vision of one small environmental group made up of five people who ask you to send $25 a year, and that's it. NARIPA is a bill and a vision that incorporates communities and people within those communities and ideas, and they're always open to participation, and that's what I really want to emphasize here. What do we want for the future? We all want, we want jobs, we want security, we want recreation, we want places to go into the wilderness for spiritual reasons. We all have fairly similar ideals. Well, let's look at our future. What are we looking at for the rest of our lifetimes? That's 50 years. It's going to take us to the year 2040. We're looking at a population that is going to double in that time. And what does that mean for us? That means that these areas that we're fighting for are going to have twice the demand on them. There is going to be twice the demand on the resources. That is not a very good situation for us. But let's look at what we have now. What are we fighting for now? In the United States, 95% of our national forest lands have already been logged. Only 1% to 2% are protected as wilderness. So what we're talking about here is another 3%. If we haven't established a sustainable economy and a sustainable culture around 95% of our national forest lands, what are we expecting from that last 3%? Can we expect that last 3% to sustain us, to take us out of the economic troubles that we're looking at right now? I don't think that's realistic. You know, what, let's look at some of the kinds of problems that we're dealing with today. We have a deficit that's running into the trillions. We have 14 and a half million children in this country that live below the poverty level. We're not working towards a future. We have to have a change, and I think NARIPA represents that change. We're losing species, too. While we're trying to deal with these problems with our own species, we're losing biodiversity, and we don't know what that's going to mean for us in the long run. So my feeling is, we can't expect that 3% of landscape to pull us out of the kinds of problems that we're dealing with today. We need to make a choice now. We need to make a choice for not just survival, but a quality of life. And that comes with a vision like NARIPA. We're looking at things like dismantling the Endangered Species Act because it doesn't look at jobs. We're looking at cutting the loss of the old growth forest. Is this going to solve our problem? No, it's not going to solve the problem. These are just escape routes. We have to, say, be aware of the kinds of things, the limitations that this planet has right now, and come up with a plan to deal with that. How do we do that? How do we take a vision like NARIPA and make it work? So many people say, "NARIPA is way too radical." You know, you're asking for, you're asking to take the 6 million acres that we have right now and lock it up. Well, we've already looked at what we've lost. It might be 6 million acres left, but look what we've used already. And I don't think it is a radical vision in the sense that it's asking to protect too much. I think it's asking to protect the very little that we have left. And let's talk about political reality. Look what we saw in Montana this last year. We had a wilderness bill that was supported by all four of our political leaders, and people said to us when we started fighting this a year ago, "Forget it. You're wasting your time. You're never going to defeat this bill. It's just not possible. It's too polarized. It's just not possible." Well, we proved that it was possible. And how is it possible? It was possible by grassroots efforts. Congressman Vento, Bruce Vento from Minnesota, said that never in all his years of Congress did he ever receive as many letters on any issue as he did on this one. I mean, that's an amazing thing. That's an amazing thing from a state like Montana, who is one of the smallest populations. And it's, to me, it's a way of showing that we can do this, and NARIPA can work, but it's going to take all of us. And I see it almost like a group of people, like the people in this room, being like evangelists. We have to go into our community with this vision and talk to everybody. Doesn't matter who they are, whether they're loggers, miners, fishermen, wildlife enthusiasts, recreationalists, businesspeople, they should all share in this vision, because it's a vision for everybody's future. Recently, in a class that I was attending at the University of Montana, we had a couple of loggers come in and talk about wilderness. And it was kind of heated when it first started, but it ended up being this extremely stimulating conversation. And I was staggered to find out that both these two mill owners, these are small business mill owners in Montana, said to us that they didn't care if we made five out of the 6 million acres wilderness. All they wanted was to know what their future was going to be, how much they could expand their mill, or whether they'd have to decrease it, whether they could tell their employees in the future whether they'd have a job, whether they could invest more in the mill. They just wanted to know. Well, I was really surprised, because I got the idea, and again, for this polarization thing, I got this idea that it was, they were over there and we were over here, and there was no common ground, there was no middle ground. And I really learned from that experience that there is middle ground, but it's going to require all of us to sit together and talk and have constructive conversation. And it's going to require each and every one of us to go out into our communities and to communities around the state, and not only around the state, but around the whole nation, and talk to people and explain to them what NARIPA is and what kind of vision it gives us. And we've had this kind of network. We had this over the last year. We had Greenpeace canvassing all over the United States, talking to people about this past wilderness bill. We have the Native Forest Council on the northwest coast. We have Save America's Forests over in Washington, D.C. And we had groups of hunters and wildlife enthusiasts all over the state, working to defeat this last bill. And the other issue that I want to address before I finish off is this idea that NARIPA is not supported by a lot of the other larger environmental groups. And that may be true, but I see that as being very short-sighted on their behalf, because as we've seen, we're looking at wilderness in a different vision now. We have to look at ecosystems. We have to look at biological corridors. These are the minimum things that we have to preserve to be able to preserve our wildlife here. These groups aren't even talking about ecosystem protection. So until they wake up and start looking and listening to the biologists and listening to the economists, they're going to be left behind, and they're going to be left behind by the people who are going to go forward with this particular vision. And NARIPA may not be perfect as far as everybody's concerned, but that's one of the things that's really important here, is that it's your bill, and it's your chance to participate, whereas other conservation groups don't allow or not necessarily encourage you to participate. I'm encouraging you. Mike Bader's encouraging you. Dan, everybody else in this room is saying, "Come forward, put forward your suggestions and make the changes, and we can make this work." Thank you.
Thanks very much, folks.
Regarding the corridors that connect these regions, animals don't know boundaries, as you stated earlier. Are these, do these follow natural migratory routes, or what determines the areas that are involved?
I'll comment maybe first, and other people can. We don't really know what will be an effective migration or an effective connector between the Selway-Bitterroot-Frank Church and the Yellowstone system, for instance. There are some rough guidelines in the literature about widths and that sort of thing that Mike Bader has applied in the mapping out of potential corridors here. So there is not a good answer to that particular question. What we know is that the rates of movement of animals between these systems doesn't have to be very high. One or two every generation or so moving from one to the other and establishing themselves as part of the breeding population in the receiving block or subpopulation is probably adequate. That suggests to us that we don't really have to have a corridor within which animals persist all the time. It simply has to be wide enough and secure enough so that occasionally animals are able to make it from one of those areas to the other. But at the other end of that, you can't have a culvert with a sign "Migrate Here," because we don't, you know, again, we don't know what it takes to do that. My own feeling is that this ban and some people, I don't know this country very well, but some people feel that that survival linkage between other systems in the Yellowstone probably are close to what is required now in terms of the amount of wild areas there and the degree of human activity. With at least some rehabilitation, and the rehabilitation that I would see as being necessary along through here would be some removal of roads where they penetrate is right up to and over in several places, the continental divide, and also probably some resolution of the grazing on public lands issue. I think probably livestock reductions, and some of that would probably end up being necessary for that to serve as an effective linkage in the long run. So I guess that's sort of a long way of saying, "I don't know." But those are sort of the boundaries of that. Mike, you want to add?
I was just going to add something to that, that one of the things we did when we looked at that is just sort of working with what you've got, and like, nobody's really going to take it seriously if we proposed a corridor across the middle of the Bitterroot Valley for grizzlies. There's people living there and towns and things like that. So a lot of these areas, you can see from the air. So a lot of these areas, you can see from the air. And like Lee said, it's not like a road sign saying, "Here's your exit," or whatever. It's just thinking of these corridors not so much as a two-way street as an extension of the reserve system. So a lot of these areas, it's literally the only place where there's cover or habitat left because the lower elevation stuff has either been occupied by people or it's planted to weed or something like that that makes it an inhospitable place for some of these wildlife. So that's the key thing. And what we're hoping to do over the next couple of years, as some of our resources and technology increases, do vegetation mapping, things like that to refine these. Some of the other corridors also were identified by verified sightings or radiotelemetry data where we had radio collared wolves, and, you know, three or four years in a row, different wolves are going exactly the same route, and you start getting the idea that that's pretty important.
Will there be human intervention specifically in regard to the transportation or movement of animals from one system to another? My argument rests on the presumption that what our management goal is a self-sustaining population in this landscape that does not require expensive intrusive management actions into perpetuity. So that I think that it's still possible to envision a population where bears or wolves or fisherlings can in fact have a self-sustaining population without those expensive and intrusive things happening. And it seems to me that if we have the potential for doing that, we have to try and create such a landscape. The Endangered Species Act does not say that the goal is to create an outdoor zoo where you put enough money in and you can grow animals and, well, look at a grizzly bear. What it says is that we are obligated to create an ecosystem within which you have a self-sustaining population. And to me, a self-sustaining population is not one that requires being helicoptered from one block to another.
Well, in the case of the central Idaho, the Frank Church River no return, what about grizzly bears? What do you think about the reestablished population and the augmentation it takes putting bears in? What puts a solution there when we don't have a lot of bears around? Yellowstone's under pressure, the Royal Continental Divide's under pressure. You go to Canada for bears, or do you take problem bears there?
You know, I leave that to the managers. I mean, but it's clear, I mean, there are a couple of points that I would make in response to that. It's clear that this area must be reoccupied by grizzly bears if we ever have a self-sustaining population in the lower 48 states, and it's probably just as clear that it has to be linked with these other areas. In terms of the optimum bears to move, I don't have a strong feeling about that, certainly as we take them from more remote areas than we run into, are they genetically similar to bears that would have occupied that, and so forth. There's probably some movement of bears there now because that's certainly within the routine distance of migration of young adolescent bears, and certainly as an area within which we could put some of our bears that are problem bears or anticipated to be potential problem bears, that would certainly seem like a good receiving place for it.
So you endorse putting bears there, then?
Absolutely, and I understand that the habitat study that was concluded this last year was quite optimistic in terms of the ability of that area to sustain bears.
What sort of support does your agenda have from the local politicians or not, and what can we do to get them behind your program?
That's a good question. We've had some support from the county commissioners, who are real supportive of wildlife and especially the idea of corridors for wildlife. Now we've got some new folks in that office, so we need to work with them and maybe get back with them and try and get their support again. We've done, we haven't been able to do that much work with the city government or the state government, simply because we've been fighting federal agencies to maintain the status quo on some of these lands. So that's an area that you've hit upon where we really need help. It's an effective way that folks in Missoula could plug into the campaign, and, you know, that's a great question.
Wes Williams, who represents himself as being a green official.
Well, most of you have probably heard that Pat is now at least talking about an ecosystem bill. You know, he really was behind and trying to work for passage of the modified Bockus-Berns bill last spring, or, you know, all summer, really. Since that died, he's, you know, I think we're moving him in the right direction. He's, you know, he's had some words in the Independent that he was going to look at an ecosystem bill and talk with the Idaho delegation about that. The elections in Idaho may have changed that whole dynamic, but now there's no Ron Marlin to oppose something like this here in Montana, so I think it's incumbent on us to really go to Pat and ask him for help and come up with a stronger position. You know, he hasn't gotten specific about what he means by an ecosystem bill, but, you know, of course, you can't just call something an ecosystem approach and have it be that, you know. The standard to me is, does it protect sufficient blocks, you know, of core areas, and does it link those core areas? If it doesn't do that, you know, it's not, to me, not an ecosystem bill. So I think we need to go to Pat. Again, an excellent question, and it points to the need for more work, really, and some opportunities for folks to get involved and pitch in. So that's definitely got to be part of our effort.
Yeah, I have a question for Tom. I understand how with your economic argument relating to forestry, you add up one side and the other, and it looks good for the overall economic benefit of the state with, if you protect these areas, but what about with oil and gas? Like, that whole area, to me, seems like you're dealing with people who, they don't really know what's there anyways. They don't really know what the value is, and they're kind of willing to take a chance and go in. And I was wondering, do you think that an economic argument is the best argument against oil and gas, or should you just maybe start talking about other values?
I think the argument is even stronger with oil and gas for the reason you pointed The area along the Rocky Mountain Front, which is the primary area where of interest to the industry right now, has been subject to exploration and development on the fringe for over a half century with no substantial commercial find. There is no reason to believe that there's a high likelihood of finding anything, so that what one's talking about is not jobs and income, but possible jobs and possible income. So then what you have to say is, "Well, what is that probability?" And it turns out that it sounds like a lottery ticket.
Yeah, we'll be doing another town meeting. This is really the first time we were able to bring folks together. We want to do another meeting in January and try and get more people involved and aware. The phone number at the Alliance is 721-5420, and our office address is 1001 South Fourth Street West. Memberships, we have a sliding scale for memberships from $0 to $500 or $5 million. So standard membership is $15, and that gets you a newsletter about four or five times a year and issue alerts to keep you informed. Right now, we've got, we've got about between 2,500 and 3,000 individual members and people from all across the country. And then we've got about 200 organizations and small businesses who are also members of the Alliance. And these are real diverse groups, ranging from hunting clubs to humane society chapters, property owner groups, to conservation groups. So real diversity, and the thing we all agree on is that we really need to protect wildlife habitat and our wildlands if we want to protect our quality of life.